Thank you. Alan's getting me down. He didn't say that he looked at me, but I sounded like I'd stop myself.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank you for showing up for tonight's December 18th, 2023 City Council meeting. If you could all stand with us and for the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Strohman.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Engel.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hagan.
Here.
Mayor Bellinger.
Here.
All right. First order of business is our consent calendar. We are pulling item number three off of the consent calendar, and it'll be read, it'll be addressed the next meeting, I understand?
Correct. We'd like to continue that item to the next meeting, which we're currently scheduled for January 16th.
Okay.
We have some follow-up items that we need to take care of, so we'll get that situated and put it back on the agenda at the next meeting.
All right. So at this point, for items one, two, and four, is there any item here at the council level we'd like to pull for consideration or discussion?
I also wanted to point out something on item number one.
Yes.
Page 12 on the minutes, it came to my attention. There is page 12. Let's see here. That's strange. Page 12 of the minutes, there is... I'm not sure why it's not popping up on there. But third, fourth paragraph down where it says Danny Fox explained the fees, it was actually Gary Haskin, and so I'd like to correct that to Gary Haskin instead of Danny Fox, and ask that the council approve the minutes as amended.
We can take care of that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve the consent calendar as amended. I motion, sorry.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Give us five oh. Next up, staff communications. Who would like to start tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, we have November reports, the treasurer's report, police department, animal control, development services, recreation, public works, building department, water department, wastewater treatment plant. If you would note on item D, recreation report, our staff that takes care of that report has indicated that it's very hard to keep it into the month of November when explaining recreation, and so moving forward, if there's no issue, we're just going to call it recreation report, and it will be reported on monthly. Instead of just November, it's a little easier to explain more and put in the most updated information there. So that's been updated, and then if you have any questions on any of these documents, please let us know.
Any questions here? All right. No questions here? Any updates by any of you gentlemen over here?
Yes.
There we go.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Just a couple of items. We do, we do have three new recreation commission members who have joined the recreation commission. We had our first meeting earlier this month, and I've been meeting with the new members to kind of share our thoughts on where we're heading, and then also get some input from them on what they would like to see over the next couple of years of their term. And then I did want to take a moment here. Staff had a walking challenge last week. We had three teams, a city hall team, a public works team, and a PD team, and we have a trophy for the winner. Public Works won in a bit of a landslide, actually. They were, they were fantastic. I want to give a special shout out to two individuals in particular who had by far and away the most steps. We're talking almost 50,000 steps a day. They, they really went for it. So George, George Agonica. And Diana Trejo were the big step challenge winners individually, but public works. So I will just hand Justin the coveted walking challenge trophy. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Did, did a few of the members walk to work from like Riverbank or something for that many steps?
We can neither confirm nor deny that.
All right. Anything else? Chief, you got anything for us tonight?
I just got a little update on that. We acquired two radar trailers, it's confirmed. We'll get those probably by this Friday. So we have a total of three radar trailers that we can deploy throughout the city. On that, I have nothing else.
I don't have anything to say, man. Thank you.
I have a few updates. So regarding our employee appreciation celebration holiday party we had on Friday, we did also give out service awards to some of our employees. Last year, we were unable to have our party due to COVID and other restrictions that were going on at the time. This year, we tried to make up for that, and so we do have Sal Castillo, who celebrated 20 years with the city of Escalon and the public works department, Jake Cook, who is on his 16th year, so we did his 15th year, acknowledging that he's really 16 years this year. We also had Becky Robbins, who's an accountant with the city, also celebrating 15 years. And then we have Joe Sutherland, who was six years, but we celebrated his five year, a year late. And then we have two officers, Sergeant Jose Zambrana and Officer Vieira, who, Nate Vieira, who also were five years. And so we just wanted to let you guys know, we have some employees here that have been hanging out with us long, and that's great, and so we like to celebrate that when we can.
Very much. Awesome job, everybody.
And then also, I do have an update on the audit. I did speak with our financial consultant, and I'm waiting to hear back from our actual auditor, but we are looking at scheduling that for the first meeting in January, which would be the 16th. So we should have everything prepared. I'm looking to get you those documents at least a week in advance, so that you can have time to review them. If I can get ahold of them sooner, I'll try to get them out to you sooner than that, but that way you guys are prepared for that meeting to be able to ask any questions and get your answers. That's all I have.
All right.
Oh, and I just want to say, because I'm staff and won't get to talk at the end of the meeting, and pending any special meetings, I hope everybody has a happy, merry Christmas and happy holiday, as well as a happy and merry and safe New Year.
Thanks. Next up, item six. We have an update from our Dura Group on the service water project with SSJID.
Good evening. All right. This is a simple quarterly update, just to bring you up to speed on where we're at, what to expect, what challenges we currently face, and what we believe are some solutions here. And just to bring you up to speed, if you go to maybe the first slide there, thank you. This is a very quick agenda, and feel free to stop me and ask questions along the way as necessary. We're going to cover the background, again, just to frame it so you remember kind of where we are at and why we're doing what we're doing. Current status, I'm going to walk you through the progress that we currently have and introduce to you the, the package that was submitted at 30%, which is a little closer to 50%. And then talk a little bit about what's next, and open it up for questions and answers as necessary. So as we, as we move into the background, just, I'm not sure how many people remember, but in 2014, the state passed the Sustainable Groundwater Act, and that required each one of these groundwater basins to have to become sustainable in the next 20 years. That sustainability component, all it really means is that we can't be drawing any more off than we're recharging, and we need to make sure that we're maintaining the amount of water that's, that's in the aquifer. And what's happened since then is you continue to have this adjudication of additional regulations making it harder to drill wells and operate those wells. The constituents of the water are more strict now than they ever were. And so this particular city has been participating since before 2014 to try to figure out how to make sure that there's a long-term viability for ground, or for water served, served to the community. So in that, there have been a series of wells that either come online or go offline or being currently maintained. I do understand that well 1A is currently under, under construction, and that, that all that does is sort of fill a gap for a well that was just not performing previously. So it doesn't add any new capacity, it just simply fixes a problem that, that existed. And then if you go and you look at the next slide, please, Dominique. Right now, in this 20-year adventure to become sustainable, the, each one of the sustainability agencies have all been taking on running projects to make sure that those projects are hitting the mark and eventually getting the groundwater basin to where it belongs. You'll notice in three lines down from the bottom, City of Escalon has a water reuse project in there, and then the last line in that, of this particular table is the, is the connection to the water treatment facility, which is fundamentally what we're talking about here tonight. So that brings you kind of up to speed a little bit, and if you go, one more slide, please. Sorry. Thank you. The, this particular project has a few guiding principles, and one of those guiding principles that it has to deliver at least at a maximum, or I'm sorry, at a maximum, not at least, 1750 gallons per minute, and it varies in flow all the way down to 250 gallons per minute, which is an operational challenge, but it is what we have already discussed with SSJID. We've discussed it with the city staff, and we understand, and we, by looking at this package, you would understand that we're planning for it in the project. It ties into a 48-inch diameter transmission line that comes from the water treatment facility at Dodds Road, and it goes north and south up Escalon-Balota, and ultimately is about 1900 and, or 19,500 linear feet of 18-inch C900 PVC pipe. So, Anna, where, where have we come and where were we before? So some of the challenges that we, we came to you with the last time is we were trying to locate a flow control facility that was equal distant between the two parties, SSJID and the city of Escalon. And we, we put it in a, at Mariposa, a sort of triangle piece that was available through public right-of-way. And when we presented it to SSJID and then again to, presented it to the county of San Joaquin, both said, hey, look, we would prefer it not be here because we believe that it's a safety concern because of the geometry of the road, even though we had what we thought were some mitigating circumstances. And through conversations, the idea now is to be able to put that flow control facility as close to Dodds Road as possible and outside of the public right-of-way, which unfortunately means acquisition of a piece of property on the southwest corner of Dodds Road and Escalon-Balota. We have not moved into the property acquisition and appraisal phase yet, but we have identified where the parcel is and some of the details associated to it, and we've presented a proposal to the city for someone to be able to appraise the property and, and move the project forward. So at that flow control facility, it will have things like telemetry that gets back to the, the water treatment facility. It'll have emergency alternative power through a propane generator, and, and in the communications, it's a radio communication back and forth that allows SSJID to control the water that's coming into the city. And then once it goes through the flow control facility all the way up at Dodds Road, then it becomes the operational responsibility of the city to get it to the pump station and start to manage where that water goes throughout the system. So if you could...
Before you go on to the next slide, why, why was Dodds and Escalon-Balota identified as the ideal location?
So many, many years ago, there was a feasibility, a series of feasibility studies, and they looked at three or four different alternatives, and one of the advantages to Dodds Road is it's straight, has fewer utilities than other locations, and it connects directly with a T to the transmission facility. So the alignment, and it gets directly into the city where we believe that there's some space for a pump station. So all of those, that's the, the primary reason why you ended up with that alignment.
It seems like in the larger scope of the project, it's more beneficial for that to be there for SSJID than it is for the city of Escalon. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
I would suggest that this project has a fair amount of back and forth between SSJID and the city, for sure. And, and I will, I will also applaud city staff for doing everything they possibly could and, and continue to stand up and say, hey, look, we, we want to make sure that this project is good for us, too. So everyone is doing a, a very good job of, of getting in front of SSJID and, and trying to work with them on reasonable terms and, and operating conditions for the pipeline.
Well, Steph, I appreciate that. You said, it sounded like you said there were three areas identified, so it sounds like Dodds, and then also the corner of Mariposa. Was there, was there a third location that was identified?
No, not for a flow control facility.
Okay.
Yeah, just these two. And the first one was rather expedient because it was within public right-of-way, directly on the alignment. It kind of made a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And we ended up with a lot of pushback because even though the flow control facility is underground for the most part, there are above-ground features, an antenna, a fence, gateways, and, and access to, to it as well as a generator. And the concern is errant vehicles for Mariposa around, around that curve, and you end up with a, a challenge in a security and safety problem. So that's where we ended up.
It sounded like land would need to be acquired at the corner of Dodds and Escalon-Balota.
Yes, that's correct.
To me, it just makes a little bit of sense to try and acquire property just on the inside of that public right-of-way at Mariposa and Escalon-Balota, right? Why wouldn't we just move that in a little bit, get it out of the right-of-way?
We, we provided them multiple options in that same location. Every single one of them were shot down for the same safety concerns.
And ultimately, they have the final say-so in that?
Unfortunately.
Appreciate your, your answer. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
A quick question for you.
Yeah.
Where's the cost being shouldered as far as acquisition of the land? Is it our town?
Yes. This, this project is being, is being paid for by the, by, by the city, and that's actually one of the, the future steps that we'll get to toward the end here, is, is finding additional funding for the project. Okay. Dominique, would you mind advancing the slides?
Sure.
Can I ask a question before you move on?
Please do.
Is there any way that that facility can be moved closer to the city of Escalon? It just doesn't make sense to have a piece of city-owned property way out in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah. We, we, we tried to, we tried to get it at the park on the south end of the project. We tried to put it at Mariposa. We've tried to put it everywhere as far south as we possibly could. And fundamentally, SSJID simply says, hey, we have a transmission line. You guys want our water? We want to deliver our water as close to our transmission line as possible so that we own and operate the, the water in there, and then as soon as it goes through the flow control facility, it's yours, and you have it, and we don't have to own and maintain a pipeline. That's, that's the challenge.
So we would be owning and maintaining the pipeline from Escalon up until Dodds instead of that alternative of up until?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. When, when we first went to Mariposa, the hope there was to be able to bring a 50/50 type solution, right? SSJID, you guys get half of that alignment, just about one and a half miles. We get the other one and a half miles, and, you know, to Tonka, good, good deal, right? And they just, they put their foot down. In, in fact, it was a, a kind of a strange thing. We, we had an open conversation, and everything sounded to be, sounded fine, and then we got a phone call 30 minutes later and said, wait, we completely misunderstood, this is not going to happen, and we ended up with another focus meeting to follow on. Yeah.
Are they willing to share half the property if the, if the station is, half belongs to them?
So...
Because what I, what I'm envisioning is that this pump station is sitting in the middle, half of it is line that's owned by SSJID, so...
Yeah.
Can they share 50% of the cost to acquire the property?
We could, we can certainly take it back to them. And one of the, one of the advantages to, to doing that in, in this conversation is that they will fundamentally own and operate the flow control facility without any intervention from the city or any authority to make changes to the flow that's coming through that facility. So to be able to grant this property back to SSJID in, in fee and title and allow them to operate it, maybe there's an opportunity in here for them to be able to share some costs.
I think it's definitely worth looking into.
For sure.
Have you looked at where other flow control facilities are for the other cities that are part of SSJID? Are they right next to that same pipeline, or do they have it halfway to their towns like Ripon?
Yeah.
Or do they tie in, in relationship to what we're trying to do?
Yeah, so two, two different problems there. One is that there aren't as many flow control facilities similar to this to, to simply drive them over and say, hey, look, this is what you did here. However, we do, we do know of one that's, that's near Manteca, and in that location, it's also on a curve kind of like Mariposa, and one of the reasons why we had previously proposed it being in a curve on a triangular piece, and they have experienced a series of thefts and accidents at that particular location that they have decided that that's not a risk that they're willing to take. Great questions.
Just trying to figure out who paid for that one in the middle as opposed to us paying all the way close to Dodds.
I'm not...
Trying to see where we can actionably...
Yeah, for sure.
Actionable on that. Okay.
Great. Okay. One, one more, please. Okay. So when we, when we were here before, we sort of had this concept of a booster pump station at the park that's on the south side here, and since then, we've been able to site the facility with the pumps, with the, with the pump curves, the control systems that, that would integrate with the city's water system. And this particular location now has a, an electrical building that wasn't part of the original concept in order to protect the electrical equipment in weather and, and through its life from, from a security standpoint. And then it also has an underground 100,000-gallon tank, which was previously discussed as a way to help meter the water that's coming in from SSJID as it's being used into the city system. And, and all of that just comes right off of Escalon-Balota into an existing parking lot, so there's not, and, and city-owned property as well. So there's not the same sorts of concerns at the boost or pump station as we have at the flow control facility, but, you know, we now have a set of plans that certainly understands a lot of those details, and we've tried to do what we can to optimize its operation with city staff. Okay. Next. All right. If you, currently, quite a bit of work that's been done on this project. We turned in what we are, what we're calling a 30% package here, it's 49 plant, 49 sheets of plans that go through the entire alignment horizontally, particularly focused on where we might have utility conflicts, where we're trying to figure out how to get under certain facilities, what the piping looks like at each of the pump stations, what the telemetry looks like, and what the, what the structures look like at each of these pump stations or flow control facilities. In, in turning this in, this has been reviewed by SSJID, it's been reviewed by city staff, and it's also been reviewed by San Joaquin County. San Joaquin County gave us very few comments and are certainly proponents of the project and, and would require an encroachment permit in order to construct a project within the, within the, the local road. The SSJID folks have been involved in almost monthly project development team meetings, and during those meetings, we talk about everything from how much water we have to deliver to the types of details that they want to see because, you know, ultimately on, on the north end of the, of the flow control facility, it's, it's theirs, and then how they're going to operate and, and communicate between pump stations and their water treatment facility. So they've been very involved in the project. In addition to that, we have about a dozen technical memoranda that have been prepared. Each one of those technical memoranda really answer these big, open-ended questions that we had when we first took on the project. We had a feasibility study, right? The feasibility study simply said, connect from point A to point B, and here's some of the equipment we think you might need. We have gone back to SSJID and the city and started asking very deep technical questions about how all, all of these operate, and we've been able to document all of those specific assumptions so that as we move forward, it will be very clear as to what the final details need to look like. We're no longer guessing about the types of pumping, the types of, the power panels that we have, communication systems and, and the rest, which, which is pretty fascinating because there's a lot of work to get there. And then we've also prepared a 30% level engineer's estimate, and when we first prepared the first estimate, we were all a bit taken by about how expensive this had become. And we were taken because we were working from a feasibility study. Unfortunately, in that feasibility study, a lot of the equipment at the pump stations, any of the paving associated to putting the pipe back into the roadway, and none of the crossings where we think we're going to have to jack and bore under an, an existing facility were, were incorporated in any of that. So we went back to our construction management and other teams throughout the country and said, hey, look, let's get a little workshop put together here and see what we can do to save some money. And we were able to make some adjustments and some concessions from SSJID. One of those particular concessions is at the flow control facility, they originally wanted everything to be subterranean. As soon as you have all these subterranean facilities, it, it costs you money and increases your risk. So what we asked for them to do is, since it's outside the public right-of-way, can we just build it above ground? And they simply said, oh, that's a pretty good idea. Let's do that. So between looking at, at the constructibility of it and working with SSJID, we were able to find another $3 million that could come off of the project, and we are currently at an estimate of $13.6 million.
Can I ask a quick question?
Please do.
Have, have we assessed how much water we have in our aquifers? Like, is, you know, as far as how critical it is and whether or not, you know, we're talking about plenty of time to make this decision, or are we talking about something that's much more critical?
Yeah, I can help, I can help answer that, I think. When, when I opened up the presentation, I talked about this 20-year sustainability plan. We're halfway through it. So the state is going to require that this basin be 100% sustainable in the next 10 years. So that's about where we're at. It, it's more, it's more about jurisdiction and regulation than it is with your current capacity and operating of your current wells. It's, it's something that's being mandated for you, not you having to act because of necessity of delivering water to your local residents.
Well, I, I get what you're saying, but...
Okay.
I guess what I should rephrase the question, maybe?
Sure.
Have we had a hydrologist look at our aquifer and say, hey, we're at critical levels? Or are we, you know what I'm saying, like, is it 70% full? Is it, you know, about to collapse in? Like, do we know exactly where our water levels roughly are?
Yes. So on, on our team, we do not have any geo, geohydrologists on, on the, on the project or an assessment of where we currently are with the aquifer. We can go back to staff and get you additional information on the operating levels of each of the wells, if that's helpful for you.
That would be, just so we can know how critical it is.
For sure.
You know, you know, mandates are one thing, but I also got to look at, and we got to be realistic with our budget, too.
Agreed.
So...
Agreed.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
So I mentioned this last time you were here.
Yep.
About the tank at the park.
Yes.
You mentioned about anytime you go subterranean, it drives up the cost.
Yep.
And I asked the question, is there any way to take that tank, that 100,000-gallon tank...
Right.
At the park, make it above ground?
Yep.
And make it a sense of community pride?
Right. And we didn't do a very good job of coming back to you and letting you know that we did a preliminary assessment, and we believe that that structure is at least twice as expensive as putting it in the ground. It's currently a reinforced concrete box.
Okay.
By putting it up in the air... By putting it up in the air, we end up with a seismic challenge and we end up with a pumping challenge in order to get the water up in elevation and then we get a chance of using the gravity on the way down. It's not a simple apples-to-apples kind of comparison.
Okay.
But we did look at it and it's about double what we were planning on in this particular project.
The only concern is if we're going subterranean.
Yep.
There, in the event of a natural disaster.
Mm-hmm.
How, I mean, I know we have an emergency generator, but can we solely rely on that one emergency generator to provide enough water for the city of Escalon if the water's underground?
Yeah, it's actually being designed specifically for that. Offline in a propane generator so that it's even a separate source of power.
Okay.
It is being designed specifically for that. And then maybe also to help with that, the subterranean facility as well as the building associated to all of the electronics to be able to keep the pumps going in the right direction are all being designed to the seismic design criteria in the area. And that when we deal with water-holding type structural facilities, we end up with slightly different or more conservative designs, a little bit thicker concrete, a little bit more rebar for some of these specific challenges.
Not necessarily concerned about falling over, I'm just concerned about if the power goes out for four days, how are we going to supply, get the water.
Yeah. And maybe to help, I was trying to explain that in an earthquake, we're not going to be losing water out of a tank that's cracked. We're going to be able to continue to hold the pumps in place so that they can operate and then it'll be operated by a temporary generator that's run on propane.
Okay.
With regards to the question, when you go back for the aquifer underneath us.
Yes.
I understand that we share obviously the same water as a lot of other areas of this valley. Can, if you come back with information, can you provide us with basically who we're sharing the aquifer with?
Sure.
Because I'm sure if we're sharing with, say, a riverbank or some of the other towns that are exploding with population, we can do our part, but that could be draining the water supply and it's going to hurt us even worse. So, when you come back with data, can you come back with some of those type of information?
Sure.
Information items for us so we can get a better global picture for that stuff?
Yeah, and I will come back to you with those.
Okay.
There's additional information that might be available for you automatically. And there is a groundwater sustainability plan that includes the adjacent jurisdictions and the projects that they have on this regional plan for a holistic approach. Right, so they're not leaning directly on Escalon, they're all having to participate together. Everyone's kind of got their chips in together.
Right, but to Mayor Vellinger's point, I mean, we would spend $13.6 million and then our neighbors to the west, I mean, they're sitting on a cash cow and they're taking, basically taking all the water out of our aquifer. I think that's kind of the point, is we want to make sure that everybody's playing their part.
Yes. Yeah, and that's why these regional facilities or regional boards have been created so that you are all battling the same battle and you're not stealing from one another. So, let me bring information back to you and share who's doing what.
Okay. Can we go back to, it was either the first or second page where it showed the other municipalities?
Oh, on the little table?
Yeah, there we go.
That's a minor snippet from what I can't remember, I think it's four, five, six pages long of projects?
Correct.
So, this was a 20-year plan.
Right.
Halfway through it, from where we are today to potentially when that was up and running, what's the timeframe? Just as a guess, because I have somewhere to go with that answer.
Say, can you ask the question again so that I make sure I'm answering?
I can. So, this is based off of a 20-year plan that we're halfway through.
Correct.
From where the project is currently.
Our project.
Yes, our project.
Yes.
From the time, or from right now to when water would flow through that pipe, is there an estimated timeline?
If we can find the funding, we can be done in two construction seasons and you could start as early as the end of next summer.
As far as.
This project.
This project, construction-wise, but planning-wise, I heard, you know, we're 30% through design as far as getting through design, actually breaking ground and completing the project.
Right.
So, you said.
If we had the funding to go to construction.
Okay.
We can go to construction at the end of this next summer.
End of next summer. So.
So, in 2026.
26, 27-ish?
Yes.
So, that leaves us seven years. What happens at the end of this 20-year process? Or do they start all over again and then we're just going to be looking at it again, have to increase flow or is it taken into account potential population growth? Is all that accounted for?
It is accounted for and it is part of a holistic approach and there's a deadline for 20 years to be sustainable. And then what that means is that when new projects come online, they have to be evaluated with respect to the sustainability plan. How does this impact the sustainability plan? And there are additional rules and regulations in order to build something new.
Got it, thank you.
I have a question, I'm not sure if it's for you or for staff, but what are we predicting, are we predicting a higher additional staff once we have this unit here? And how many staff would we maybe have to have on board to be able to operate?
No additional staff.
Additional staff?
No additional staff. Okay.
Okay. So, let's do this then. Can we go to the slide that says what's next? We've covered a lot of this territory already and I don't want to distract you. Keep on going, it's a slide with a big blue bar on the left. There you go.
Oh, sorry.
Perfect. Okay, so, we're at an interesting crossroad. We have enough information to be very clear about what we believe the expenses of this project are. There are a few things standing in our way of moving forward. And one of those things is property acquisition to be able to put in a flow control facility. Another bit that's standing in our way is a way to finance this project. And rather than us spend time and energy continuing the design without a commitment for funding, we're recommending that we all work together to kind of, to find a way that can make this project work. So, we have that. And then, once we have this path forward, there's some big chunks that still need to be done. One of those chunks is a geotechnical investigation for this pipeline to make sure that we understand the construction of not just flow control facilities but the entire pipeline. We've made some conservative assumptions in the project so far. Another is to identify through utility potholing the exact location of where underground utilities are that could potentially conflict with this particular pipeline and work with the local providers of those utilities in order to relocate, protect, or have them review our plans that would give them confidence that we're not going to undermine their facilities during construction. And then finally, the piece would be final design for us. On the final design, this package does not include the vertical component of the pipeline, it only has horizontal components. So, we end up with a vertical component of that, going and detailing each one of these particular crossings that we're talking about, and then going back into the plan set and making adjustments for the items that we were able to pull out during the value engineering of the $3 million savings. So, there's a substantial amount of work there. And then finally permitting and permitting through the county and permitting, getting an approval or blessing through SSJID, and then finally drinking water, Department of Drinking Water. And by doing all of that, we have a successful project. So, that's where we currently are and I know you guys have been asking questions along the way, I'm happy to answer more if you've got them.
Quick question on the funding side of things, as you mentioned.
Yes.
If I understood you correctly, you want to pause until we have the funding lined up right now.
Right.
Before you continue with your work.
Yes.
So, if we do that and we delay it, our construction costs go up.
They do.
We have a contract with you to finish those designs and plans, why would we stop you from working on that to secure funding as we work towards that?
If.
I'm trying to understand, delays are expensive in construction world, very expensive.
Yes.
And what is the timeline from this point until you're ready to go out for bid? What's your expected timeline for the work you're doing right now?
Mm-hmm.
So, if we delay funding until we get funding, let's say.
Right.
We go, okay, we got the funding, go.
Right.
When I get to point B until I can start putting groundwork going in, what's your timeline to finish your work to get permits?
Our design, nine months and then whatever it takes to bid it and award it for construction.
So, at this point, you have nine more months of work.
Yep.
To do.
That's correct. Yeah, and one of the things, I appreciate the question. One of the reasons why I'm hesitant is that without an acquired parcel for the flow control facility, it's a risk item, right?
Yes, I see that as a risk item.
We can design a pipeline around it. However, if we design it and we end up throwing away a portion of design if that flow control facility doesn't work for the acquisition. So, that's one of the risk items. And then the others is in order for us to move forward and get a geotechnical onboard to do the geotechnical assessment and potholing, we need that information in order to finalize the plans. Makes sense?
Some of it.
Okay.
I think you can work backwards and skip to other stations and still continue getting something done. I'm fearful of delays in your work that we're waiting for that, that's a fear of mine.
And it's a valid fear, we're here to work with you guys in order to make sure that we are making reasonable progress without jeopardizing the treasure that's available.
We don't want rework to be happening, but I think there's things we could be doing to continue to move the ball forward, in my opinion.
Fair enough.
I have two questions.
Okay.
First one is, if you're at 30%, well, actually, before I ask my question, does Ardua have the resources to help the city staff try to identify these funding sources?
We do, we actually work throughout the country on water and wastewater projects and we have a really good relationship with self-help here in the state and there might be opportunities there. We just haven't had a chance to investigate those as part of the team. So, I think that there are ways for us to help and, but the challenge is, we need, we just need to be clear as to who's doing what and how we can help.
So, my second question is if we're at 30% right now.
Yep.
Does it make sense to hold that 30% almost as a bridging dock and convert your contract to a design-build and go out and hire a design-build partner to finish the remaining 70% and go into construction if we identify the funding source?
Generally speaking, I've been on design-build jobs and design-bid-build jobs since the 1990s. Generally speaking, we go to design-build if we're trying to shift the risk of a project to the contractor. We don't, or if we're trying to compress a schedule. We generally don't do it for, we're not generally successful for doing it for cost because it generally costs us more to do design-build. However, this project, we can identify what those risks are. One of the cautions I would have is that this does not have a permit for the Department of Drinking Water. The responsibility for the contractor to go get that permit is probably outside their normal scope.
Second question, or this was probably the third question then.
Yeah.
Are there, in your experience, I may have mentioned this earlier this year, but are there private water companies that do a P3 agreement that they would develop this and the ratepayers would pay back the private developer over time in a P3 agreement?
Generally, the P3 agreements I'm aware of have to do with treatment and delivery of the water. So, they would generally own, operate, maintain the treatment facility.
Mm-hmm.
And then sell water back through the treatment facility. I personally am not aware of a P3 to build two pump stations or a flow control facility, a pump station and a pipeline and then for them to own it.
Okay.
And just simply deliver.
So, there has to be like a bigger investment.
Generally speaking, it's part of their secret sauce.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Between Ardua and staff, do we have an estimated timeline for funding?
We're going to be looking at multiple resources. It just depends what those grants, what their schedule is and when their deadlines are and when they would predict or let us know when they would release the money. And they're all relatively different.
Can we generate a timeline with milestones to try and ensure that we're on track for that?
Some of them will take it that way, yeah. Yeah, we could do that.
And that's something that Ardua will participate in or is that strictly going to be?
No, they're going to have to help.
Staff?
They're going to have to help us, yeah. So, we will be working as a team.
Nope.
And we have not looked at self-help yet at all and so that's an additional source we'll be looking at.
In the next presentation, is that something that we could have included, the funding timeline?
Yeah.
With some milestones, just to try and get this on.
Yep.
Some type of realistic track?
Yeah, and I think it would be helpful in that to provide you context as to where the funding, what the funding sources might be and any strings attached or regulations associated to them.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful for you guys.
Sounds helpful.
Other questions?
Any other questions up here? Do we have any questions in the audience for this gentleman here?
Do you have any idea what our rate's going to be when this thing's completed?
We do not.
So, how do we build something? We have no clue what it's going to cost us to get water to us. Why won't we think about financing before we start this project? We're deep in this project 30% already. Have we ever considered that the funding source should be figured out before we got to this point? You'd be doing business, go out and start a project without knowing your costs.
Got to understand what the project's going to cost, that's one step you have to do and we didn't know what that was.
We don't know truly what the cost is today. He says 13 million, it was 15 million, we're not done yet, it will be different for us.
No.
My question is, we have no idea what the water rates are going to cost us.
I believe that's part of our action items in the process is do a water rate study between now and the time it's a go on the project.
We know the overcost at this point is around 13 million plus. We know that we have to get a funding source or he won't move on because he wants to know that he has funding sources before he can complete the project, so we have to do that. It just seems to me that, and then we're half of 30% done, is that where we are, 30% at this point?
They're at advanced 30, but.
How much money have we spent so far on this project?
The general fund, I don't believe we spent anything because this was out of.
Yeah, this is all out of it.
The ARPA money.
Our fund that we've been saving for, specifically for this since 2013 at 104,000 every year. So, when we adopted the budget, we had close to a million dollars in it then. And I know these most recent billings were about 250, so I'm not exact, but we should be somewhere around 7 something. And then every year, we get that additional 104,000 from the City of Tracy for our allotment.
Our timeframe is what, year 2027?
We're looking at.
26, 27, depending on construction timeline, sounds like.
But we don't know what the acquisition cost of that project is going to be either. After your name and 13 million?
It's part of the contingency of the 13 million.
13 million?
Yes.
What happens if we don't do it?
If we don't do it, then we're going to have a whole lot of explaining to do for the groundwater sustainability plan because this project has been a fundamental component of that plan from the beginning.
If the city can't afford it, that's the reality.
That's right.
Any other public comment? Any other public questions? All right, thank you for the presentation, appreciate the update.
Thanks for your time.
All right. Next up is matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however it is not required. Due to state law.
Council members?
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Let me finish, please. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. Requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is at the discretionary decision made by the mayor, and at that point, you will open it up. Mr. Alves, you had a comment or question?
I do. Council members, Mr. Mayor, good evening. The reason for my presence this evening, I didn't know about the water thing, which is I'm glad I'm here, but, uh, I was called from people telling me about the park situation, so I took the time to go online, get the thing downloaded and looked at it. My personal opinion is, its design is fine if you lived in Livermore or Pleasanton. This is not either. This is Escalon, and I think what we're designing is something doesn't, it's not compatible, in my opinion, for this community. The bike path in the middle of the park, I think is the wrong place to put it. You're cutting at the park up, which cuts down the use of the park. You're also paving it with asphalt. Asphalt is gonna be a constant maintenance problem. Why isn't that concrete? Because of cost, of course, but still, you're building a, a maintenance problem down the line. I think the bike path could have been along the fence instead of through the middle of the park. We have a car show there every year that's gonna be dissected, and all the parking lots, I mean, are we anticipating a massive growth in the businesses downtown? I mean, we got, you put in one, two, I think, three different parking lots. It just doesn't seem like it's compatible for what we're doing here. And the, you know, as far as the cost, the cost would have cost. The other thing is, I think what's important here is transparency. I looked at those plans, most people aren't gonna understand what those plans are about, unless they're in the trades. You should have elevations and pictorials showing people a realistic view so they can understand what you're talking about. Most of those people that get those plans, they're, they're dizzy. They don't know what they're looking at. So I mean, if you're worried about getting things through, you might wanna give us a break and not be so non-transparent and be more transparent by putting that out where people could actually understand what you're doing. Other than that, I mean, it's gonna happen, but I just don't like the design. I think we could do better. I think you're killing your car show, and I think that's another problem. The Lions Club aren't gonna be happy about this, most of them aren't. Anyway, something to think about. Good luck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. First of all, I wanted to stop by and say Merry Christmas to everybody, and thank you for all that you guys have done over the last year and, um, working with the board. I'm Robert Rickman, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors for District Five. Also, I wanna say, you know, go Cougars, excellent game for the section title, and, um, yeah, thank you for Escalon Times also for posting that following, you know, it's, um, it's, it's kinda odd when you're in a meeting and, you know, you're trying to be sly and look at your phone and get the updates without anybody catching ya, but hey, we're proud of the Cougars, the Escalon, and hopefully sometime in January, they'll come before the board and we can recognize them. We are in touch with the coach and athletic director, trying to get them down there, and I'll have my office let you guys know too, if anybody would like to come and recognize, you know, with us. Also, I just wanna let you all know, in January, we will probably, or we will have applications going out for NCO funding or non-county organization funding. I know last year, Escalon Strong was, um, we worked with, my office worked with Escalon Strong and got him some money for the community, and Escalon Strong has been doing great things here in the community. I know the community garden was a, a big hit, and my staff was there, but it's money, one-time fund that can be used for nonprofits, and so if you all know some nonprofits or anybody in the audience have some nonprofits in mind, please have them contact my office so we can get the application out and hopefully get them some dollars. Again, this is just one-time funding, and I wanna, it was a couple of weeks ago, I was over here with the, at the, um, tree lighting here downtown, and with the mayor and Councilman Strowman, I saw you both, and we were talking with Escalon Chamber about the purchase of the tree, and I believe it was like 1,500 dollars. Good to know, Mayor, you were right there. I brought it to the board, and we're using district funds, my funds at a District Five to reimburse the Chamber for that tree cost, so they can keep that money here for students or whatever, they can use it. And that's just another, um, thing I'd like to mention too. If you have something that I can help you with, uh, please reach out to my, my office. I have a limited District Five funds for my district that I can use for certain things, and, um, always looking at for good projects that we can help out and be partners with the, the cities. So again, just wanna stop by, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and God bless you all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all you've done for us.
Well, he left before I could ask him for money for a resource center. Good evening, Sherri Hill, Escalon Strong. Um, I'm up here because I, I noticed the item that I wanna speak on is in council communications, not agenda. So do I, please don't start my five minutes. So do I, do.
You can do, you can address the topic.
Do you want to get that item?
You can speak at that item.
Yeah. Now or then?
Then.
Then. Okay. Is it open for discussion then?
Yes, it will.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, it's still an item on the agenda for direction, and so it's still open for comment.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Still along the lines of our, the pulled item on the Main Street Park quote improvements. Uh, last year, we had a workshop. We went over the plan for, for the improvements. The plan that was submitted, which was to be approved to this evening, is totally different than the workshop plan that was presented to the community. Uh, if we're gonna do it next meeting, as Dominic mentioned, I'd like to see some blueprints that we can see up here and show everybody exactly what's going on, and the renderings that Ed mentioned would also be helpful, so we can actually see what's going on. You mentioned the Lions Club Car Cruise, it would virtually destroy it, and we've gotten, oh, real close to half a million dollars in Escalon High School senior scholarships, and we would lose that, at least a big portion of it. So please have those, uh, displays available so we can all see what's going on. Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and close matters presented from the audience and move on to Item Seven. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute an 18-month agreement, form approved by the city attorney, with the Escalon Unified School District for a school resource officer effective January 1, 24.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so this item comes before you, as the council may be aware, we meet on a monthly basis, um, as, as much as we can pending schedules, um, with the Escalon Unified School District, their district superintendent and two of their board members. And so the item for a school resource officer has been discussed over the last several months, um, pending, um, city filling in some vacancies that we've had. Um, we did have a few, uh, positions that were basically on hold. We had, um, disability or workman comp, um, items going on where you're not allowed to replace those positions until those are handled. Those have been taken care of. We held a recruitment, we've gone through the process, and we're filling positions there, um, and so this opens us up to be able to provide this item. Um, and so at our last two-plus-two, we discussed this item in detail, have worked with the district superintendent, um, as well as our city attorney, um, and getting that draft agreement, um, as best as possible. I've also worked with our financial consultant on the breakdowns, uh, for how much this would cost and how much we would charge the school. Um, and in essence, the school district has agreed to fund the position 100% of their time if it's, you know, related to or at the school, um, including any extra hours that may be needed, any trainings that are needed, um, which there are some trainings that would be required of this officer, um, to participate in and complete, uh, to be a school resource officer. Um, and the, uh, this would come out to roughly 70% of the officer position. Um, we are proposing currently, um, to utilize existing staff. Um, we have nine officer positions. Um, we are in need of eight of them for traffic patrol, um, and then we have a ninth position that the past few years has been assigned as a detective position, um, but we have been unable to fill it, um, due to those vacancies I had spoken to you before. We have staff that were out, but we were still paying salaries. So although we've had that position and haven't had anybody in it, we have been paying it as a part of other, other items, and so we are using that money. So essentially, with the school district, um, wanting to have this position and fund it 70%, this would actually help out the city and the general fund, because they would be paying for that portion of the, of the school resource officer. And so, because it's an existing position, this will roughly decrease, um, the, um, expenditure to our general fund out of the police department. And so we wanted to point that out to you, um, as indicated in the staff report, and the district has made it clear to the city that this position is needed immediately and is a top priority for the district in years to come. Um, obviously, in light of a lot of recent events nationwide and things that are happening and just society's change in general, um, they are looking to move this as quickly as possible. Um, and then if there are issues or things that come up, we meet on a monthly basis, um, we work with the school district hand in hand, um, and if changes are made, I've discussed with our attorney, we would bring those back to the council if necessary, and the district would bring it back to their board as well and, and work on those, um, if they're needed. Um, but we do have that draft agreement in hand, and if there's any specific, uh, questions regarding this item, please let us know. We also have, um, the district superintendent in the audience, Ricky Chavez, as well as one of their board members, Nick Caton, if you have any questions specific for the school district on this item.
Real quick question, you mentioned training. What's involved to make one of our officers an SRO?
So there is a 40-hour training, um, that's required.
Is it an online thing that we can get into at any point in time, or do we have to send somebody?
We'd have to send somebody physically to the training.
So we wouldn't have an SRO until the next class opened up and we were able to get somebody in? Or are we allowed to temporarily have an officer on-site for them?
You are allowed to temporarily, temporarily have them on-site, um, and then once that, once that class is available, we'll get that scheduled, and so that person would essentially be out that week getting that training, and we could work with the district on whether they need a replacement there, and we need to put somebody in that position, depending on what the schedules look like.
And that's my question with, we talked about, you know, sporting events or after-school events where we would like an SRO. With the training for the one officer, that might be a problem, because he's already has hours for the day, because he was already there for the eight hours of the day, and now it's a 6:00 PM thing.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have to have another officer go through the trains? We have a backup SRO, not just another officer? Is that something we need to do? And if so, would the?
Chief, answer that for you.
School need to?
Not necessarily, because.
Be okay without that?
He's just gonna be there for that period of time. It'd be no different if he's attending like football games, it's because it's gonna be just fill in the spot. So meanwhile, the officer is at training, if they need another officer at any event, they can always reach out to us, and we, we have the reserve program that can, can fill in.
As long as it's not a requirement for the SRO training is my concern, because obviously officers have vacation, they get sick and whatnot, um, I don't necessarily want the city to fund, you know, another training on the off chance we have to cover a sick leave for somebody. If we're allowed to substitute without that, then that's good.
Yeah, there shouldn't be a problem with that.
Okay.
Um, you got a period of time to complete that training, you don't have to do it right away.
Okay.
So if we don't have a school at the beginning of the year, the, the school might be open maybe in March or something like that, but we have a period of time that we can, we can complete the training for that officer.
Okay. Any other questions? That was my question I had.
Yeah. Go ahead, Andy. Go for it.
I'll have a question, just.
Okay. Um, and the second to last paragraph says the Escalon Police Department is supportive of transitioning this position into the SRO and have identified an experienced, interested in qualified reserve officer that can do so. And then the next paragraph says the district has made it clear to the city that this position is needed immediately. It's a top priority for District in years to come. Given this information, the council may wish to consider funding for a 10th officer position in future budgets. Um, Chief, it looks like the department is in support of it. I'm, I'm in support of it. I, I'm curious as to how much that's gonna stress the department currently? Like, will you transition, uh, January 1? Is that gonna put additional stress on you and your officers?
No, it's not. It's not.
Okay. Thank you. And then the second part, um, that I was reading, talks about the council, you know, potentially considering additional funding in future budgets. What, what does that look like? When is that an opportune time for us to, to bring that up? Do we have to wait till mid-year budget? Do we have to wait till '24, '25?
So we're gonna try our best to bring that to you as soon as possible. Uh, mid-year budget may be a little early. Um, as you may be aware, the, our staff is looking into multiple items, um, to increase general fund revenues. Um, that was one of the council's priorities, and so we have a few different options that we're exploring at this time. Um, so it might not be at mid-year, um, but it's definitely gonna be a topic for discussion that will be brought up at that time, um, and we'll have our financial consultant there to discuss it at that time, and then pending, um, general fund revenues, and of course, um, you know, the district would be paying their portion, um, we could have estimates put out at that time, uh, to review as a discussion item, and then pending these options that we have for general fund revenues, we might be able to forecast that for the next fiscal year, and if not, maybe the fiscal year afterwards. It just depends on what, what comes from those general fund, um, options that we're looking into currently.
So realistically, when could we, if, if we were to approve additional funding, right? When could we get another officer back for the force? Like, we're gonna borrow one for the SRO. I'm totally in favor of that. Also in favor of getting them, that position back, right? But what's a realistic time that that could actually happen? I mean, is it, are they gonna be without for a year? Is it gonna be, we go through the budgeting process and then we recruit, and it's, it's a two-year vacancy? What's a realistic timeline?
How long will we run without that position?
How long will we now?
How long will we have?
About three years.
Three years. Three years, and we've not had that position filled by an on-duty officer?
Correct.
Not, okay. Well, that's, that's even worse, right? Like, let's, and it's, it's available to be filled now because the workman's comp situation is resolved?
Correct.
So in, in the new hires, were they, were they part of filling that position, or is that position still vacant?
Uh, I believe one of the new hires filled one of the positions.
Filled that position?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not currently vacant? Okay.
The SRO position itself, um, it's, it has qualifications, you know, minimum years of experience, completion of field training officer, um, and so with the, with others that might be in that position, they're not, they don't have enough of the qualifications that we would need for that. And so that's why we've identified somebody who was not only interested and passionate in that position, um, also meets those qualifications.
So what, I'm still just kinda curious. So we were lacking that position due to legal restraints for three years, we were able to fill that position, and now it sounds like we're gonna take that and borrow it and give it away, which, that's cool, but how quickly can we, can we fill that spot back in?
I mean, we, we discussed it at mid-year budget, and if it's the council's wish to put that either in, in mid-year budget and/or fill for the next fiscal year, as long as council directs us to do so, we can do so. Um, so I will definitely have it as a topic discussion at mid-year budget, because I have talked to our financial consultant, and so as long as the council is in line and in agreeance with that, um, I mean, we can move it into the, the next fiscal year.
Assuming that was, so you said move it into the next fiscal year?
So our next, our next fiscal year, so July 1st. Yeah.
Okay.
So to add to that, um, I have a list of candidates for new hires, so it just depends on when it gets approved from the process. From there, it'd be like three or four months when they do the whole background and all that stuff, so.
So if.
Yeah, with, with hiring an officer, with hiring any position, we created a, a eligibility list that's good for six months, and then when that six months hits, we can extend it an additional six months. Um, and then specific to the police department, when they run background, backgrounds can take anywhere between two to three months to complete, um, and so it is kind of tricky in that point, that when you're looking to fill a position, it might be delayed pending background, medical evaluation, and then they have to do psychological examinations as well.
So realistically, as long as everything aligns, it sounds like there's potentially a year?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to have something to be able to gauge that to and follow. Thank you.
No problem.
One of the things that I mentioned in our two-by-two meeting with the school district was this 10th officer position. And something to consider in the future budget is identifying that classification as a school resource officer. Because our school district friends are willing to pay for that position, it may be an opportunity where that particular position is on a 10-month salary to match the school calendar. Because if the school district is paying for it, basically, nothing is coming out of the general fund. But yet, they're still an Escalon police officer. But we can talk about that further in the budget. This obviously seems like a slam dunk for us to work together with our partners at the school district. It builds community pride. It shows our students in the elementary schools that police officers are an integral part of the community. I don't know why we would not pass this.
Any other questions?
I do. Well, this security officer is, okay, never mind. Oh, there it is, sorry. Primarily at Escalon High School, but also at El Portel and Dent. Is there a scheduling? I guess I have district people here to ask. But is there a scheduling percentage that they'll be at each of the sites? Is that something?
There's something we're going to discuss. Schedule to what times the officer's going to be at the high school, what times he's going to go to El Portel, what time he's going to go to Dent. He might rotate times, things like that. That's something we've still got to work out.
And I'm sure when we open it for comment, they'll have additional information to share as well.
Okay.
And just to represent all of our schools, I'd like to suggest that you make a loop at our other sites as well, Van Allen, Collegeville, and Farmington, at some form of rotation as well. So they have some skin in the game as well, and get to see a resource officer on occasion as well. Don't ignore the rest of them.
I just think it's, like I said, it's no brainer. It's important to take care of our kids, and one of the first things you have to do is provide a safe atmosphere for them to learn, so.
At this point, if we're done here, let's go ahead and open it up to the folks here in the audience here. If you'd like to ask questions, have comments, concerns, or whatever, feel free to come to the podium and ask questions, if you have any on this topic.
Ricardo Chavez, Superintendent with Escalon Unified. First, I want to thank you guys for considering the item here. And again, thank our city partners and the council that has been coming to our two-plus-two meetings. I think it really does speak to both the district's effort and the city's effort to work collaboratively to improve services for all of our constituents here. So I want to say that first. There are a few things that we're still trying to flush out, such as the schedules, as it was noted. And we agree with you, Mayor Bellinger, that we really want to provide the visibility to all of our schools. The way that the contract was written the way that it is is because we were not sure about jurisdiction issues, being that, you know, some of our schools are falling outside of city limits. But certainly, if that's something that the police department can help us with, we definitely want to make sure that we have law enforcement presence across all of our school sites, again, being a top priority. I also just want to give a little bit of information that this is really part of our broader goal, to ensure that we're providing safe schools. So in addition to trying to bring on a school resource officer, we've also worked on improving access to our facilities, to make sure that they're safe at all times, and making sure that we have better control and access of entry points as to who comes in. And then also working on augmenting our mental health services for all of our students. So again, council considering this and partnering with the district would be, I think, in the best interest for everybody, and we really appreciate you considering the item. Thank you.
Anybody else? We'll get a closed public comment then. Bring it back to council for consideration at this point.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the contract here with the school resource officer position.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carrie's 5-0. Let's keep those schools safe. Appreciate the efforts between everybody involved. Thank you so much. And next up, item eight. Discussion regarding the city services and maintenance community facilities districts for new development projects only, and discuss options for the development of a CFD, help fund essential city services.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Jalen French. The item before you is a discussion item, sort of in light of the last discussion and the city's ongoing, you know, budgeting constraints. City staff is looking at additional ways to generate revenue and ensure that the city is providing adequate services for the citizens of the city. And so one opportunity that is out there are called CFDs, Community Facilities Districts. This council in the past has emphasized fiscal sustainability, especially in light of the loss of a major sales tax producer in Hillier Ford. Many cities in California stemming really from Prop 13 have fiscal issues. Prop 13 limits the property tax growth that can occur for residential development over time, and so revenues generated in cities can be limited, and providing services can be challenging. And so state law in California allows for community facilities districts to be established, which essentially is, you know, an assessment tax on new development to fund infrastructure and/or services and ongoing maintenance. So really ensuring that, especially in California, development is paying not only its upfront cost, which is a development impact fee, but is really paying for the long-term maintenance over time. So I mentioned California law dating back to 1982, the Melrose Act. Many people know these districts as Melrose districts. These districts can fund things like police services, which you were just talking about, recreation, ambulance, libraries, where applicable and appropriate, in addition to infrastructure. So staff has outlined a couple of different options in the staff report. I'll just kind of look at those quickly here.
You want to do a discussion?
Yeah, number two.
Authority services?
No, it's on page four of the staff report. There you go. So there's a couple of different options. And in terms of establishing a CFD, establishing the first CFD, which would come forward either funded by the developer itself or funded by the city, and it would be a specific district that would cover just that development. But at the same time, we would establish kind of a citywide boundary. And then every new development that came in would annex into that overall boundary. So that's one way to establish these districts. The other way is largely similar, option three. But some of the approvals are done upfront, and then the developer, with the unanimous approval, would enter into the sort of citywide. So again, this is just for new development. It's not for existing, even though we would have a citywide boundary. The citywide boundary is to ensure that all future development that came in, if the council chose to move forward with CFDs, would enter into the CFD.
Sorry, does this include infill lots that are being built on, like single homes on single lots within the city of Escalon?
Yes, it could. It could, depending on how we establish the CFD.
Okay. And then this also could or could not, like the apartment rentals, those types of things, would those also be considered for the CFD?
Yes.
Okay.
And just, it can be. Usually with small infill projects, one lot, two lots, it doesn't pencil to put them into the CFD. It won't pencil for the developer, it won't pencil for the project. But theoretically, yes, it's possible.
So the other sort of decision point here is on what type of development, and this is what your questions were alluding to. Many cities establish CFDs just for residential development, because the residential development doesn't produce, you know, additional sales tax revenue, although it does property tax, of course. It doesn't produce additional sales tax revenue like a commercial or industrial project would. So some cities just focus on residential development in terms of establishing CFDs. Other cities will have any new development pay into a CFD or establish a CFD, including your commercial or industrial developments. So it's really a policy-level decision that would be made at the council level. So that is, you know, kind of the long and the short of this informational item. We wanted to bring it forward as an informational item to the council to provide an overview of what a CFD is, to generate thought and questions. And then we will follow council direction on how we proceed, if we proceed with this item. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have on this item, or the public.
Council up here, questions or thoughts?
I'll share some thoughts, Jalen. So I understand, and I appreciate the premise of a CFD. My biggest concern is essentially this is another tax. And in my opinion, you have to kind of look at the totality of the project to understand, okay, what size project could actually support this CFD, if you will? So if you look at some of the projects that we're currently discussing, Weldway is a one building. The 18-unit senior complex, that's 18 units. And the proposed possible multifamily at Elizabeth and 120. I mean, that's a real cost to the project that these developers haven't really accounted for. And ultimately, that would be put back on to, in the case of the senior housing and the apartments, that just drives the cost up of the project, which then puts it back on our residents. However, if you look at something like the large in discussion residential property that Florshaim is talking about, there's 75 units. And that's, the 75 units, you spread the cost of a CFD over 75 units, it's a little bit more manageable, as opposed to one building here, two apartment buildings there, 18 units. And so I think if you look at, if we're looking at CFDs, we actually have to look at it almost on a case-by-case basis and apply the CFD principle to the size of the project. So I think it's truly dependent on the size of the project.
Good question. And just, not a point of clarification, but just to outline, there's really probably three potential costs associated with establishing a CFD. The first would be actually establishing the district. We have an estimate from our consultant. It's about a $25,000 cost to establish the first district, and it'd be, you know, anywhere between eight and 10 to establish the subsequent districts. So an option would be for the development community or developer, development project, to pay that upfront cost, so that the city does not bear that cost, or for the city to bear that cost, because it would be sort of the citywide thing. So that's the first potential cost. And again, council direction or policy on where that cost is born. The second would be for any infrastructure that would need to be provided. So in a subdivision like Murphy Ranch, 75 units, if there's a basin, for instance, they could, if they wanted, you know, establish a CFD for infrastructure to front-load some of the funds, so that they could build that infrastructure. But that is not likely for more of your one-offs or small apartment complexes. Now, the third cost is really borne by the future resident. And a future resident would know full well, going into buying the home, that there is a Melrose district established. And in, like a Murphy Ranch, that Melrose would maintain some of the infrastructure within that project. But it also can be established to maintain and provide funding for ongoing services, like we talked about, police, fire, if it was applicable, library, recreational programs, that type of thing. So those are, I wanted to kind of outline the three potential costs associated with establishing and maintaining a CFD.
Is that something that you can pull data from other cities, or like the projects we've mentioned here? Is that something you can kind of go into a little more detail as far, and provide maybe later, what those numbers might look like for a resident in the 75-home project at Brennan 120, maybe? This is kind of what it would look like as a cost for each parcel, or what it might look like for the 18 senior home, or the other project on Elizabeth and 120? Just some ideas of, you know, okay, the upfront cost is one thing. We kind of already have that penciled out. But, okay, what does it look like for the person who's going to buy a home at that 75 development? What are we talking about on an annualized basis, or something like that? What kind of revenue are we looking to get back from generating this? I mean, we can generate it, but I'd like to see the revenue side, what's coming this way. What does that kind of look like for what we would have to work with, and what it would do to honestly skyrocketing house prices in Escalon?
Yeah, I think we can do some research to try to identify a rough estimate. I will say that it's not going to be apples to apples. An analysis will be done, if we establish a CFD for services, again, like police, to determine what is the current gap we have in, you know, our ability to fund these services, and then how many units or square feet of commercial industrial do we have? And then you would divide that number basically by the units and square footage to give, you know, a rough cost. And so it's going to be dependent on our numbers, but we can certainly try to give you, you know, a ballpark figure that would give you a sense for what this looks like.
Have you done this before, Jalen? In other cities?
In cities I've worked in, they've had longstanding CFDs.
Because, you know, one of the things we all are in agreement with is we really need to increase development to increase our tax base. Does a CFD have the potential to scare developers away from wanting to develop in the city of Escalon?
It is an additional cost potentially, maybe for commercial and industrial, but, you know, again, it's a common thing to have CFDs just for residential development and not for your commercial industrial development.
At the residential level, it's pretty much a pass-through, though, the consumer that buys the house, right?
Yes.
Those weren't, not necessarily a cost to build?
Yeah, it's a tax on the property bill.
Can I just, also just add on to what Jalen just said? I've seen and been around a lot of CFD formations over the last several years. It's, I'm not saying that it, I am not saying as a policy matter, it's something that the city council should do. I'm just saying as a matter of observable fact, it's very commonplace throughout California now, because municipal revenues have been going like this, as the state has restricted the ability for local government to be able to raise revenues through different means. And one of the ways that cities have used to combat that is CFDs. So it's been very common. I mean, in a lot of developments, especially in the last 10, 15 years, it's very hard to buy a new house that doesn't have a Melrose associated with. And that's because it's trying to bridge the gap that was created when Prop 13 was passed in '78. If you notice, Prop 13 was passed in '78, and when did the CFD law come online? 1982. It was a response to that, it was that response to that, led to that Prop 13. So again, I'm not putting value and judgment in, I'm just saying, as a matter of fact, this is kind of, this has been the trend, to help recoup some of the loss of revenue that cities have had, and this is one of the few tools you can do it. What's elegant about it, and what a lot of cities like about it, is that you're not taxing, you're generally not taking it out to the polls as a general tax measure. It's really one landowner, one master developer that owns a bunch of land, that agrees as part of a project to impose a CFD on the project. And so you can always... And so you can always get, you can always get a majority vote on that because it's basically a one-for-one, because you're dealing with one party and usually it's the master developer. And in theory, I've never tested this, but in theory, that cost, that CFD tax that gets tacked onto the house, in theory, the market adjusts for that. So the value of that house, in theory, you may pay a little bit less for that than a house that isn't part of a CFD because the market may not be quite as desirable for a house with a CFD, especially in an area when there are no CFDs, so there's a lot of competition. So in other words, yes, it gets passed on, but it does get passed on as sort of a, it is discounted in at least a theoretical way in the market, if that makes any sense.
I think it's a great idea for all future large developments. I also think it's a way to kick some of the people that want to develop in our town in the butt as far as imposing a timeline, saying that it's going to be effective, say, Q3, 2024, all applications prior can fall out of that scope, right? Get them to start putting their money where their mouth is. The, there's one issue at page six, I think we're on it there, of the staff report under next steps. It says, "If directed to proceed, staff will work with a consultant team on the next steps as follows." It says, "Prepare and adopt the city's CFD goals and policies." I can't really get on board with that. I could get on board with preparing and reviewing with the city, but not the adoption prior to preview. Was that, was that just not supposed to be in there?
I don't think the intent was to do it in one meeting necessarily, just at high level, these are the major steps. Prepare, review, that could be a series of meetings, and then eventually you would adopt it. Because you'd want to do all that groundwork before you form, do any resolution of intention to form a CFD, for sure.
As far as adopting the goals and policies prior to the CFD resolution of intention?
Yes.
Yeah, those are sort of the milestone gateways, you know, prepare, adopt, that's what you would want and have to do.
So it's not one step, essentially that's two, it'd be prepare, present, adopt?
It could absolutely be.
It could be over a series of meetings, workshops, whatever. It's just the thing, it's basically all the foundational assessment, analysis, discussion, workshop before you move to a formal, because the second step, that's what's, that's actually a requirement under the government code.
I just think it was a matter of the way that I read it. It looked like it all is one step, prepare and adopt, so not that there was a second step or a third step in that process.
So, question, the cost to the resident, is this based on a percentage of the assessed value? Is this something that is set when you purchase the home? Is, like, how is that calculated and how does it fluctuate?
Yeah, set as you, set per unit, per parcel, whatever that is established. So if someone had a thousand-square-foot house and it added 200 square feet, they are not getting assessed more. It's not ad valorem, it's not based on property value or necessarily square footage in that way.
And so is this cost, I guess it's set by the city, is it per purchase, does it change? Is it, does it fluctuate when it resells? Or is it just once we establish it, is that then set for the life of the home?
Again, depending on how we adopt it, it will have an escalator. It could up to 2% per year, but it's not based on property value, so it won't be different or higher upon a sale of the property.
Okay, so it would have up to 2% per year, and that would be up to the discretion of the city of whether to practice that 2% or not? Is that correct?
Yes.
Are these in perpetuity, per se? Someone buys a house and they're in it for 50 years? Because I know some Melrose taxes have sunsets.
I think Jalen hit on it. The main two are for maintenance slash services, the other ones are facilities. Facilities generally have a sunset because once you pay off the cost of that, typically there's a bond issue to finance those, that infrastructure, the backbone infrastructure for the project. Once that paid off, just like any other note or financing, it can go away. Typically, ongoing maintenance services are in perpetuity because as long as you need police, as long as you need public safety, as long as you need whatever those services would go to, so.
Any questions up here before we open it up to the public?
No, I'd just, I'd like to just see at some point what kind of a realistic number we're looking at as far as what is it actually costing the individual? Because, you know, the risk has to be worth the reward, so to speak.
We got our revenue stream for sure.
Jalen, what is the difference between a CFD and a landscape district?
So CFDs have more flexibility in terms of what they can fund, what services can be provided, what infrastructure can be paid for. Two different state laws establish LLD, LMDs, and then the CFDs. So that's basically the difference.
So LMDs are specifically for landscape and lighting, whereas a CFD, it's wide open?
It's wider open. It's not, it's not wide open, but it is, it has more flexibility in terms of what services can be funded, in this case, for a service CFD.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have to track that revenue against like an enterprise fund to show those type of ins and outs of revenue expenditures for those long and ongoing maintenance items that they're funding when the money comes in?
Not directly like an LLD, because this is a tax, it's not an assessment, so you don't have to show direct proportionality. But, you know, the constituents are going to want to see some reasonableness.
All right, let's open up to the public. Who's got some questions, comments, or concerns in the room here that'd like to come up to the podium?
What's the difference between what you're proposing versus a gated community?
So I assume you're referring to an HOA?
Okay.
A homeowner's association. A homeowner's association is an assessment within a specific district.
A housing project.
Yeah, a housing project to pay for things within that district, private.
Right. So what you're proposing is beyond that. What you're suggesting is that you create a district that creates revenue beyond the actual cost of maintaining this project, and that revenue will then be spent on what?
So it could be police services, recreational programming, parks maintenance.
And there is a sunset on that, and you say that sunset ends when?
So if it was a service CFD, which was what I was just referring to, there's not necessarily a sunset. If it was an infrastructure-based CFD for some physical improvements, there would be a.
A housing deal. Let me ask you this. How does that generate on an annual basis? What's the increase is going to be? What's it based on? So in other words, you've got a base you're starting at. What influxes of, what increases occur and how do they occur? What are they based on?
The only increase would be the built-in escalator, which would be established, and it could be no higher than 2%.
Almost like, okay, it's like your taxes. So it's 2% on top of your taxes. So really now you're going to be paying 4%. So the other thing is, you now have.
It's not a property tax.
It's not a property tax, but it's still a tax.
Right, but you said it doesn't double your tax to 4%, though. That's what your average margin is.
Well, you have 2% of the value.
2% of the cost of the CFD, not the value of the house you're paying 2% on.
I think the question is, what are we estimating what that costs yearly for the CFD in the original? What do we think that that will be, what will that increase the cost by?
Yeah, and that is something that staff will have to come back to give a rough estimate. Again, we won't be able to provide specific details, but a rough estimate. And yes, it's 2%. So let's say the tax on an annual basis was $100, the next year it could only be 102, not 2% of your property value. 102 the next year, and then whatever 2% is of 102.
What does that tax do to your property value? Does that raise your property value?
No, I don't think it has.
I think that's what our attorney.
Yeah, what I was getting at was, it's just a market dynamic. If you have two houses identical in the same neighborhood, let's say two, one has a CFD, one doesn't, well, the market forces would presume that the one that doesn't have the CFD will get a little bit more on the market than the one that does have the CFD. Because we've all looked at houses where one, you find out there's a Melrose, and you're like, ah, wish you didn't have a Melrose, right? And so if you can get a house that pays a little bit more, but there's no Melrose, you'll probably pay a little more for the house, but a lot of people would prefer that. I mean, so it's just a market, it's just a market dynamic.
But, okay. But at the same time, you could be actually putting yourself in a situation like somebody mentioned earlier, it's going to scare off some development. Because the cost of these homes are going to build when they start developing, probably about $700,000. That's going to be a steep mountain to climb. The only people who are going to be able to pay $700,000 aren't going to be from Escalon area, they're going to be from the Bay Area. So they're used to paying those exorbitant costs. So it might work. But the other one just covers the cost of development, so.
This device here is strictly for creating more tax base.
Anybody else?
I sell a ton of real estate in this town. Oakdale put in a CFD, call it a Melrose for all intents and purposes.
CFD.
That's what it is. In 2008, the council set a standard, any new home being put in, single-family residences being built, had a certain standard of Melrose, 75 bucks, I think, or more. They also froze into a constant rate of, I think, 2% or 3%. As far as I know right now, any new developer goes in there, that's when they adjust their 3%, okay? You asked about property values, they're coming up. It's like, it's like the attorney said, same houses, they're looking at the same. Thing of it is, and these houses that do have these Melrooses, especially the wide-open ones, they have firehouses in those neighborhoods that are landscaping, the lighting is paid for by these Melrooses. I'm not for or against it, I just wanted to bring it up to the council. I don't think it's getting properly represented here, though, too.
They're paying for the maintenance.
They're good. It's basically it. So are you living in a better neighborhood or not? You talked about putting in a gated community, you brought it up a couple of years ago, if I remember right. It's the same.
Well, it's different the fact that the money doesn't stay internally. The money, excess amount of money for the value of the property.
But if. Just keep the public comment to the, yeah.
But it pays for the services of the streetlights, any maintenance in the neighborhoods, if there's landscaping maintenance, you need.
It's paid for.
It's not a burden on the city. And that's what I think is, I got to understand that. It's passed on to people that are buying into the new homes, and it's not a burden on the city, not an add burden back onto the city. I think that's something that's important, I hope you guys all realize that. Again, I'm not for or against it, it's just something that you need to be realizing, though, too. I'm a taxpayer in this city, too, so, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you for the SRO, too. That's another subject. Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, we'll go ahead and close that item, then. Thank you for the discussion. So get some more information to find out for us, come back to us with some more info for us.
Will do.
I'd be interested to see if it looks more like 900 per year, like Mr. Hayden was saying, or if it's looking a little higher than that, lower that. I would like an estimate on that when you come back with us.
All right, item nine.
It would, just if I may say, it'd probably be much, although it'd still just be kind of a shot in the dark, it'd probably be much easier for staff to estimate based upon services as opposed to infrastructure, because infrastructure is, I mean, as the SSJID discussion shows, I mean, it's a completely pie in the sky, because it depends on what the infrastructure is. So assuming you were just referring to like a services CFD, that'd be more doable, I'm assuming, right, Jalen?
Yeah, that was my thought, it was going to be a service CFD estimate.
Frank, could we use Oakdale as a reference point?
I think you could use any city. I would probably want to start with a city that has a similar size and go from there. And maybe a similar general fund revenue. Those would be the probably the two biggest factors, because you would assume that they would have the same financial needs. But yeah, you could start looking at any relevant agency.
We have some jurisdictions in mind.
Item nine, discuss and provide direction on an agenda item request from Mayor Protem Hagan and Councilman Engel. We got in the use of the foyer area of the community center for senior food distribution.
Thank you, Mayor. I provided a little background and overview on this item. And so back in October, council discussed the current policy on rental of the senior room of the community center, provided direction on that. And then at the October 16th meeting, we had a member of Escalon Strong that advised that they had come to council and advised that they intended to come to council and ask for permission to use that foyer area because it was better suited for the type of distribution they were doing with their senior food. And so we did receive an agenda item request on this item from Mayor Protem Hagan with support from Councilmember Ingel to put this item on the agenda to discuss the use of the foyer area. And then if you have any questions, staff's available to answer anything related to that community center.
Well, I'll step out, because I don't want to influence the vote or anything. So I'll be over here.
I'll just say you're free to step out, if you want, there's no legal conflict of interest here.
Yeah, but it's still a conflict of interest, so.
Sil, you would like to speak on this topic? Please.
Okay, senior keyword, it's really late, it's past my bed. So, forgive me, I don't take pictures and work, but I'd like to let you see these and pass them along. And if you hold it like this, you'll be able to see what I'm talking about. Let me do it like this, if you're visuals, some people are visuals. So if, from your point of view, looking at the community center, the four years here, you've got the northeast entryway, and then you've got a southeast entryway. So what I'm proposing is that you allow me to use the foyer, and I can put the tables in, as you see there, in a U shape. What that does is it allows the people to come into the northeast door, go through, pick up their food, and go out the southeast door. It makes it so that they don't go into the senior room, it makes it so that they don't go down the hallway into the bathrooms, it contains them right in the foyer area, and they come in and they go out. It is so much easier for me to set up the foyer than it is to use the senior room. To use the senior room, I now have to dismantle the senior room, cover things up, because they have dishes out and things, you know, and they have to be in, they have crafts and things, and it's a very, very narrow room. And the reason I say that it's very limited, I need to let you know roughly how much food I go through on a Thursday, just a Thursday, not my other distribution days, I have other distribution days. On Thursday, I can go through anywhere from 1,000 to 2,500 pounds of food, and they come in the door, and the last person out the door is in 45 minutes. If I can limit them to the foyer, they go in, they go out. It's an easy setup, it's an easy cleanup, it's an easy teardown. Now, let's say there was one day when somebody had rented the big room. If I had, I responded quickly, so we used the senior room. It was a nightmare, it really was. I did it, it worked, but it was a nightmare. And thanks to all my volunteers who were very creative and went through it, you know, we made it work, but it was really, really difficult. It takes me about an hour, hour and a half to set up, 45 minutes for them to go through, and about a half an hour to tear down and clean up. If someone is going to use the auditorium, they're still, if they're, all they're doing during the day, if they're going to use it for an evening, is they're setting up, they can go through the other doors to set up, they don't necessarily have to go through the foyer. But if you don't want the foyer restricted, you still need to understand, my people are going to come through the foyer no matter what. Only now the whole building, you know, basically they can go down the hall, they can go, because I can't watch the foyer and the senior room and do food distribution. So honestly, the foyer, it just, as far as ease goes, there's nothing. So honestly, the foyer, it just, as far as ease goes, there's nothing in the way. As you can see, there's decorations in the foyer, and we worked around those, and nobody touched them, we didn't, there's enough room to go in and to go out, and it's real smooth, real easy, it's a good floor, you know, I don't mess with anybody's crafts, I don't mess with food. Just so that you have some numbers, again, anywhere from 1,000 to 2,500 pounds of food on one day. We service, the most we've serviced is 397 people within that 45-minute window. That's a lot of people. And they go in and they go out. And the majority, actually all of my workforce are seniors, all of my workforce, and I've got probably 20 different seniors volunteering just for the food program. I mean, we have other programs in Escalon Strong, but just for the food, we've got roughly 20, 21 volunteers from truck drivers, you know, that go pick up the food and come back, and, and we never know exact times, so that's why I never know the exact time, because we're on call when to go pick up food. So anyway, those are my numbers, and that is my request, and if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer it, it's just, it's a much, much easier setup. And like I say, then I'm not going to irritate, you know, seniors in the senior room and their crafts, and I don't.
Something that you plan on doing every Thursday, is that your hope, or is this other days of the week?
No, just Thursdays, at this point. At this point, we're, we have a contract with Oasis out of Stockton, they get Starbucks and we get it exclusively, and at this point, it has been almost every Thursday, there are some, I've got three Thursdays in a row where there was nothing available, so we had no food distribution on those Thursdays. Obviously Thanksgiving, any holiday, if it's a Thursday, we will not have food distribution. We have an odd distribution, the last week of December, we actually get two, we get a Wednesday and a Thursday, but Wednesday's going to be grocery items, because another ministry that partners with them is closed for that week, because it's, you know, vacation, they're closed, so we get the benefit of it. So we're going to get anywhere from 1,000 to 2,500 pounds of groceries on that Wednesday. And I anticipate that it's going to be the same timeframe, you know, it'll be in and out, people know, we have a texting program, so we've got someone who texts people in groups of tens to say, come get your food here, we've got people who make phone calls, and then we put it on Escalon residents. So everybody's pretty much in tune that, you know, it's going to happen on a Thursday if it's going to happen.
Is there a certain time of the day that you do this, or?
I'm on call, so I can get a call at 9:30 in the morning from Stockton that says, come get it, it takes me an hour and a half to get my drivers there, then they have to unload, they have to load the truck, and then come back and unload the truck, and then we have to sort all the food. As you can see, we use crates and we sort it by, by type, so that, you know, you're not sifting through food, people aren't touching things, everything's in a bin as to what kind it is, and it's all labeled, so they can just go through, they pick it up, they put it in their bag, and out they go. So it can be, we're on call anywhere from 9:30 in the morning to about 2:00 in the afternoon, but I will always be done by 4:00, 4:30.
So someone, what's plan B if the hall's rented for that day and they have an afternoon event?
Plan B, that's a good one.
I'm just asking, because honestly, if someone's got the hall rented and they're having an event.
Right.
At noon, 2 o'clock, or whatever, they're not going to want to see 3, 400 people come through in the foyer while they're in the middle of their event.
Gotcha.
So I'm just curious, what's, what's a plan B for that?
So plan B is, I don't have a plan B, because I don't have a resource center yet, Rickman left, I can't ask him. We have used the courtyard outside the kitchen area, outside of the senior room, we used that one day, because the, the facility was being used, and it was a nice enough weather that it was cool enough that we wouldn't spoil food, and like I say, we're really fast, so the food can only be out so much time, but the weather was good enough that we could be out there, and because it was more fall time, the sun was on the south side, not on the north side, so we did okay in that courtyard area. We may be okay in a park, as long as it's not summer, but when, you know, when it's summer, I, I won't have an alternative, I'll have to turn the food away.
Okay, is that something we can make sure if we did do something like this, adequate coordination, so their organization would be aware of that?
Yeah, I mean.
Aware of the schedules.
Ran into a hiccup that first time, which was literally the week that it got approved.
And I adjusted quickly.
But since then, we've been really trying to stay on top and proactive and making sure that we're not running things in, into each other.
Three groups in the building at once, kind of thing?
Yeah, and then, and for the most part, on a Thursday, not, not too many people schedule.
I agree, yes.
Yeah, for Friday, and so it was, it's, it's kind of rare in that instance that it happened to happen that week, because most people take the Friday for the Saturday. And we don't, we don't have too many Friday rentals.
There have actually been two Thursdays where somebody has had the building, but one of them, we could have actually, that's when we used the courtyard, we probably still could have used the foyer, because they weren't doing anything, they'd already set up, they were just there. And I'm sure if I'd have spoken to them, they would have said, oh yeah, because it was the chamber, we would have been okay, but we were able to use the courtyard, no problem. So if worst case comes, you know, I mean, Karen is our coordinator for our facility, but she also does the senior lunch, so we've adjusted before, and we, we did use the senior room once, we made it work. It was not my first choice, it's not my second choice, it's not even my 10th choice, but we made it work.
Uh, Justin, from the Public Works side, do you see any issue?
Really not, not so much at this point, as long as we have the scheduling worked out. Sherry and I, we work, and Karen and the, we're close together, so if there are issues, I've mentioned them, she's corrected right away, vice versa, I don't really have any issues, just more of a scheduling, as long as we schedule it, because I don't want to prevent a pay, a rate payer turning them away for the event, but she's, we have alternatives, I think it's a good thing.
Okay, so, in your opinion, it's manageable?
It is.
I think it's a great thing if we're able to.
Definitely.
Offer any services to, to our folks in town, and especially with the Wednesday, potentially that's coming up, too, if there's any extra we can do. So outside of yourself, there's, there's really not another form of management of that, would that be correct, or would there be management of that facility by you for reservations, or does that all go through Public Works?
No, we actually have staffing in City Hall that takes reservations, and so people call in, want to book a reservation with the community center, and we have a calendar, and all of the staff has access to that calendar, and they, they mark it as it go, as they go.
Okay.
And so what we've been doing now is, is checking it weekly, to make sure we don't run into hiccups. And then we do have some people, like items that, that typically sometimes fall on a Thursday, Friday, or well, as well, that have become more last minute, or typically related to like memorials and/or funeral services, those types of things. And, and we're just more cognizant now to make sure it doesn't conflict with things.
Okay.
And the only small change I could see, which is, it, it's not an issue or a problem that's needed at times, is we may periodically, two to four times a year, get the atrium waxed or cleaned a little more often because of foot traffic, but literally that would be it.
So minimal cost, minimal management, management benefit to our residents. I don't, I don't personally see how we don't do it. I'll throw that back to the rest of the council.
Any other questions on this side?
Yeah, I have a question. So in background and overview there, it gives the background that we did approve the usage of the senior room at the community center by council-approved nonprofits, and we went through with the process of reinstating the council-approved nonprofits, having that, that application process, and then coming back to us for us to approve. Are we moving forward with that, and is that ready for us in January to approve, as we had talked about before?
It'll be on the meeting of the 16th.
16?
Yes, yeah, we're, we're preparing that letter, it should probably go out this week, and that will be a letter to all nonprofits that we're aware of, or that we have some type of background on, which will include Escalon Strong, and it advises them for renting of the community center, and that's for like, we have a rate schedule for residents, and then we have the, a rate schedule for non-residents, and then we have a rate reduction schedule for nonprofits approved by council, and so there's, there's separated rates, and that would be at that, and so in January, anybody who responds back will be brought to council for review and approval, and then from then on, if anybody else was to apply to become a council-approved nonprofit, they would be like separate, they'd come as, as the application comes in, so say somebody wants to apply to get that discount, and they inquire about it, we let them know they have to go to council for approval, we give them that application, they'll fill out the application, and then they'll come to council, council separately on their own. Whereas in January, anybody who submits the application, they'll come in a lump sum, all of the applications to council for review and approval.
Okay, and then for that, do we have a rate just for the foyer, or is that?
We don't currently.
We don't, okay.
So Sherry, what happens when, on Thursdays, when the senior fund bunch has their program?
Yeah, they're, yeah. We don't have a conflict area.
Okay, so the fund bunch meets on Wednesday, then you would use the foyer Thursday. I just imagine a whole bunch of people coming in the foyer.
No, because, and the following Wednesday, after Christmas, it's the 27th, the fund bunch has already been, well, they're this week.
They're this week, yeah.
So there's no, you know, we, we double-checked before we told Oasis, yeah, we can take it, because that's a lot of food to turn away.
Okay.
So we, we double-checked to make sure, you know, I checked with Karen, she's pretty up, you know, when the seniors are coming in, so we knew that Wednesday was clear, and then we checked with the city, and then we told Oasis, yeah, we'll take it.
So to kind of piggyback on to what Counselor Walker was mentioning, in January, when somebody, one of those nonprofits comes in and they say, we, we want to use the foyer, is that fine? I mean, we're not going to charge Escalon Strong rental, so is now the foyer considered a usable space for any of those nonprofits?
So currently, it does not have a, a rate established to it, and so that's something that council would have to consider at, at this point in time.
But I'm, I'm saying, we don't want to charge a rate.
Yeah.
But if one of those other nonprofits decide that they don't want the bigger hall, they don't want the senior room, they want to use the foyer. Wouldn't that be something they brought to us, and then we got to talk about?
Yeah, it would be something that if they inquired about it, we'd, we'd tell them to come.
Councilman Strowman, if it was beneficial to our residents, would you be in favor of it, or?
I'm, I'm 100%. I'm 100% in support of this.
I honestly don't see anybody else asking for the foyer, I mean, it's a unique circumstance, it just happens to work really, really well, because we have crates to put the food in, and because we have it organized, and we can be behind it, you know, it, it just kind of contains everything, and it moves real smooth, just.
And I can, I can foresee somebody wanting to use that for their club registration purposes, or something where they're coming in and out, and that's why I'm saying, maybe there should be some sort of rate attached to it, but then as council, we have the jurisdiction to forgive them of that fee, like in this case, and so setting that fee would at least give us a standard to go by.
But in this situation, I don't think it makes sense to charge Escalon Strong
No.
A rate, because Karen's already there with the senior food program, so.
I guess when we set it up for the use of the senior room, we had some concept of rules of who could use this outside of this program. Do you recall exactly what those were? I thought it had to be an approved nonprofit within 95320, we had some list of things, can we just transfer that list to the same thing to the foyer?
You can, yes.
If we can have that information.
So.
I think there's a little bit of a difference, though, if it's, if it's for a nonprofit, and they just want to meet in there, and they want to avoid the fee, so they think it's free to just meet in the foyer, that's.
Agreed.
That's different than if they're providing a service to our, to our residents, not to themselves, it's not of their benefit, right, it's to, it's to our benefit to be able to help our people. So I, what you're saying, they should all definitely be on.
We have a library, you can freely use the room for meetings, too, so.
So in the.
For that, I would think, yeah.
And in your action back in October, you know, it was a council-approved nonprofits, and then you have a preference or priority for serving seniors, that was additional as well. So, I mean, if somebody were to inquire and ask about it, they're, they're going to be told to come to council if it's something that they're looking for, but we'll also advise them that we already have it used on Thursday, and hopefully they would pick a different day, and we'd be able to, to utilize that for them at that point. But if they fit this description, council-approved nonprofit with a preference or priority for serving seniors, we would make that available, available to them so long, so much as they fit the hours of eight to five, those type of things.
Not all day, it's.
Yeah.
Few hours hitting this, in an hour.
Specific to that, to that senior room, now the foyer, if, if you want each person to come back to us for permission to use that, then we'll bring them back, but if you want it to be where we open it up, like indicated here, in this preference, if you let us know that, we would update our preferences for that.
I would like to see a rate set, and then to be forgiven that rate, they can come to council, and that way that they have the right to rent it if they want to rent it out in that space and use it for their space, but then, like if, if Escalon, should they be approved as a council-approved nonprofit next month, then we would be able to approve them and forgive them of that fee.
I just also want to clarify, when we serve food, I don't turn anybody away, so it, I don't turn anyone away. We have 80% of our recipients, maybe more, are senior households, at least 15 to 20 are also families, so it's a very large number, it's surprising. But the vast majority is seniors, and all of our volunteers are seniors. Any other questions? Thank you.
Is this a discussion for us to potentially put this on an agenda? Frank, is this something we open up to the public, or are we, excuse me, just make a decision on if we want to put this on the next agenda?
That's the decision, that's the decision of this body.
So what we're looking to do right now is just decide if we're going to put this on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, this one, it's set up, I think it's different for, for council.
It's make a decision if they're allowed to use the foyer or not.
That's not a decision tonight, this is an agenda item request, to be an agendaized item, correct?
Future agenda item.
This is, this is for a future agenda, agendaized item.
I'd say the notice to the public indicates that this is going to be a future agenda item.
Right.
Okay, in that case, I have an emergency request, because I have food coming Thursday, and I have food coming next Wednesday and Thursday, so in lieu of you being able to make a decision tonight, is there a way that I can have approval to go ahead and use that foyer?
I think in lieu, we work together, you and I.
Yeah, yeah. Come on, I take those tables down myself.
Do we need council approval?
No, I was going to say, that's something you can work with staff.
Public Works and, and their official capacity can work with our community to make a solution happen.
Policy matter can be dealt with another day.
We'll work on policy, make something happen with Public Works, make everybody happy.
Thank you.
I think that's good enough for today, for that. So I think at this point, we need to decide if we're going to put this on the next agenda, then.
Yes, I may.
Please.
I'm Charles Levitt, born and raised here, so early probably this year is when I had the first opportunity to actually meet at the senior center to have lunch twice a week, and I thought that was pretty awesome. Well, then I was asked, back in probably October, to be part of Escalon Strong Group, which, that was new to me, but it's a great program, I understand there's a lot of needy people, elderly people that maybe don't have the ability to actually drive and come down to the center to pick out their food, so I was all in. I'm one of the drivers now, and so on behalf of everyone, I like to say thank you ahead of time to letting us use the center. I was amazed, she was talking about 500 to 2,500 pounds. Luck of the draw, I got the 2,500 pound one. Mercy, that was a lot of work, but we made it happen in a short matter of time, and like you said, everyone's seniors, but I think it's a, a great program, awesome for the citizens and here of great community, best one, and it's been an asset to be able to use the, the center in numerous ways, but really to be able to give out the food in a short matter of time to a lot of needy people, so, thank you.
Thank you.
The one time that we had to use what I call my room, because for the last seven years, it's been my room. It was, we could do it, but it was hard, because I leave my tables set up. I mean, we get there at 8:30 in the morning, we leave there at 12:00, and you don't have time to be taking all those tables down and everything, and I leave them set, the placemats and everything. We could do it, using the foyer is just so much easier, it, you know, but we could do it, if you guys don't want to use the foyer, then I guess we won't have a choice, but the foyer keeps people controlled in that room, keeps people from going through my stuff, you know, it, I can leave my table set, we have stuff disappearing, we've had, someone from the city was in there and all my sugar and cream disappeared. People don't realize, everything that's on those tables, I personally bought. The county doesn't provide anything but plates, you know, so I think the foyer is a good idea, and I hope that you guys, and as far as the letters you're sending out, am I included in that? Because I don't know what I'm talking, were you about? Because I don't know what I'm talking, were you about using the-
I don't, I don't believe so, I don't believe the lunch program's a part of that.
Okay, good.
I, I'll have to double-check, but I don't, in pass, it has not been. Um, because it's a county-sponsored program that's placed at the community center.
If I have to share, I will, but please, let her, let's lose the foyer. I, I also volunteer with her, and the foyer is really a much better idea, you've seen how we work it. Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, bring it back.
I'd like to ask if the item is added to the agenda for the next meeting.
I'll second that.
I'll agree with that.
I'll forth that.
So officially, all those in favor?
I think it's consensus.
Aye.
Oh, wow.
Hoes, there you go.
Just consensus, but yeah, that's-
We'll go with that.
Okay.
Shall we go retrieve, uh-
Yeah.
Mayor Protem?
There you go.
I know.
He got lost in the halls of the, of the building.
He's just got to get his coffee, coffee right there.
He's back there drinking coffee, of course.
That's over. All right. Working next, Council Communications. Um, Councilman Walker, what do you have for us tonight?
Um, sure. Uh, good meeting tonight, everybody. Uh, I'm glad that we are adding to the safety at our school district, and improving that over there with the resource officer. Congratulations. Um, and then, uh, just for staff, I would like to see if we can work up a potential pricing for the foyer, uh, itself, right, that rental, that fee. Um, that would be a great improvement, so that we can offer smaller, uh, services to our community members as well. Um, and besides that, everybody have a great New Year, and Merry Christmas, and we'll see you next year.
Uh, Councilman Strowman?
Couple things. First of all, uh, to, uh, Ricky and Nick, thank you for taking the time to come to our meeting tonight. Appreciate that. Um, looking forward to have a, um, police officer in our schools. I think it's going to do a world of good for our community, for our students, for educators, our administrators, everybody across the board. So, uh, thank you for making that a priority, staff and, uh, Frank. I do have a concern regarding the plans of Main Street Park. And, and that is, um, it was on the agenda, then it got pulled, but you're asking us to make, to approve, uh, a contract of 1.6 million dollars that quite honestly, most of us have no idea what the project is about. And it's concerning that we're supposed to make a decision that we, we have no idea. I mean, yeah, there was a workshop, but, um, Mr. Haskins stated that the, what was presented in the workshop and what was bid on are two totally different things. So I would like to ask council for some support, um, on this, that before we bid on accepting this bid, that we actually have, um, the design company come make a presentation similar to what our DURA did, uh, to explain to the council what all the project is involved, um, so that we get a better understanding. That way, if somebody's asking us about the project, we can clearly explain it. Um, so, looking for support on that, because quite honestly, I don't think any of us can answer what all of the project is involved. I mean, I've heard restroom, I've heard walk paths, but we need something to, to review before we go and spend 1.6 million dollars on a project we don't know anything about.
Coming into this meeting, I had several questions about the park situation myself. I, from what I understand, it has made several changes since the last time we've seen a workup at the workshop. I'm not sure, because I haven't seen the workup of it, um, any, you know, before we were going to consider it this evening. So I'd love to see a, at least a rendition, if not a presentation, um, and see, uh, I, I'd like to know lots of where, about the parking, if there's any trees to be removed, those types of things. And, um, yeah, just more details on what this is going to entail for our historical park in Escalon.
I'm not saying we're doing any throwing, just trying to say we want to get educated on what exactly the project is. So if we could have a presentation at the next meeting, that'd be helpful, uh, prior to awarding this bid. The, um, just thanks to Supervisor Rickman for coming to our meeting. And, um, congrats to Escalon Strong folks for the feud distribution. Feeding our, um, community is probably a priority that all of us want to do, because no one should deserve to go hungry, um, especially our seniors. And last but not least, uh, just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, uh, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Holidays, but, uh, hope everybody has a great holiday season, Happy New Year, and, uh, see you in 2024.
I mean, you may want to just clarify with the council, because you want to, if the, if, if you're going to bring the design at the back of the next meeting, you may not be able to, I don't, I don't, I don't know if you should bring the reward, award back at the same night. That's your call, but I just want to make sure the council-
So I was automatically thinking that's going to get postponed to the February meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we're bringing back design, um, and presentation on Main Street, then we'll push, we'll end up pushing back the award of the project to at least the next meeting, depending on result, yeah. Yeah, and I played that out in my mind, so.
You want to make sure the contractor will hold the bid?
Sure, yeah, we could do that.
Councilman Ingle?
Yeah, I just have some more on that, that item three with the park. Um, yeah, we did have a workshop, and it did sound like we had, um, design in place, and that's the project that we were going to proceed with. I, I don't see that as the same agreement that was talked about during the workshop. I don't even know about holding that bid, I mean, we can ask them to hold it, but I think we need, uh, an additional workshop to get public feedback, to make sure that it's what fits the residents of the town, and, and what the goals of the town are, not just what our goals are. Um, and then it may need to go out to bid again. So I don't know if that means it needs to go to, to, back to design. Um, it is coming from the, there was a, a bond or a grant that that money was tied to.
Correct, Measure K, so it is 100% grant-funded.
100% grant-funded, right now total project's at, you know, 1.6. Um, what was the total amount of that?
Total amount of the grant was 1,998,000, roughly.
And how much have we utilized to date for design?
Oh, I can't recall.
I mean, are, are our funds exhausted, are we, are we to the point where we're going to have to budget down?
No, no, we have-
Stay in budget?
We have enough there to fund the entire project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, but that, yeah, that's what I would like to see, if I can get support. I, I don't want it to see it come back and get a presentation. I'd, I'd like a presentation, but I'd like public comment, feedback, essentially a workshop with the ability for us and the residents to express their concerns about the design.
Yeah, I'd support you on that.
Thank you, Andy. Yeah, and that's all I have, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Uh, I'd support you on that. I think, um, you know, it's important for all of us to be on the same page, um, so that we can avoid any kind of frustrations with each other. I think transparency and being on an open, um, playing field is, is, is key for us to all, you know, at least have our input heard, whether it's used or not. Other than that, I look forward to seeing the police also on campus. Um, I'm glad you guys are moving forward with that, I know it's been something you've been wanting to do for a while, so. And, um, I'm excited to see it move forward as well. Other than that, I don't have much else to, to add, other than have a good, safe Christmas with your family. Uh, just be aware of your surroundings, wherever you are, if you're in large crowds. And, uh, best wishes.
Thank you.
For you, Mayor, I didn't want to cut you off, but I just wanted to get a point of clarification, because we're talking about a presentation for council, and then we're talking about workshops. And so I just want to make sure that whatever's instructed, that, that staff does it appropriately. So are we looking at a, a presentation at the next council meeting, or do you want specifically a workshop?
Well, I'd like to see, my opinion would be, I'd like to see what the change, you know, from where it was to where it is. And then get input from, um, everyone involved, including the public, to understand, um, you know, like there was concerns brought up, how it could affect our, um, car show, for example. You know, what changes are happening in this relative to the old, agreed-upon, um, thought? You know, how is that actually impacting that car show, for example? Just those kind of things, um, so that if we do move forward with something, it's not, um, radically changing our, um, you know, our traditions around town.
Yeah.
You know?
I think-
But like workshop, workshop, presentation, presentation and workshop.
Right, right now what she's saying is, I have a request for a presentation, I brought it from workshop. I think what she's saying is, can staff just agendaize a workshop that will include a presentation, and we can call it a day? Or do you still want a standalone presentation? And then a standalone workshop, it's a little duplication of effort?
No.
That's all she's, that's all she's-
We don't want a duplication.
Okay.
I just want to make sure whatever's-
So you define the presentation in the context of workshop?
Okay.
Yes.
You feel comfortable with that?
Could we, could we do the workshop at, uh, like 6 o'clock before the next council meeting?
That would be my recommendation. If you want a workshop, I would, I would try to start an hour earlier and do a 6:00 PM workshop, followed, and then a council meeting afterwards, if that works.
And can we advertise that workshop, so that we have our community members?
Yes.
Good news you have a month, so I'll give you some time.
Can we also have the previous presentation available? We, we have that, I'm sure, in a PowerPoint, or-
Yeah, and show like-
Yeah, so, yeah.
Changes, yeah.
Yes, please.
Yeah. Good, just wanted to make sure we got that down. Thank you, go ahead, Mayor.
Just going to make it real quick, uh, good conversation tonight, covered a lot of good things. Happy we're getting the resource officer. Uh, thanks for the extra radar trailer, see what we can do with that. Thanks for your team for walking so much over there, Public Works.
Getting them back to work this week now.
Yeah. How many injuries were sustained in that effort? Other than that, just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season, be safe, enjoy the family and your friends. It's what this time is all about. Help a couple people along the way, if you have the opportunity to, and just enjoy the season. And, uh, with that, we're going to adjourn the meeting, thanks for everybody for showing up.
Jalen, does the walk competition have anything to do with McDonald's? Because I did see a crowd.
We bet at 6:00 in the morning, walked there every morning, and had breakfast.